I got seven o'clock. If we're good, I'll do get us started and do roll call.
Let's do it.
Real set. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner. This is the Town Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting for Farmington. I will start with roll call of the commission members. Patrick Carrier.
Here.
Scott Halsted.
Here.
Matthew Hutt Wagner.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Ina St. James.
Yeah.
Bobby Cantor.
Here.
Then Matthew Bandle.
Here.
And I will note for the record that Mike Graboulis and James Ratcliffe are absent this evening.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Ina St. James. Today is Monday, December 11th. Welcome to Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting. So I would like Matthew for you to be a voting member tonight. Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Awesome. And then there are a couple items, Bobby, that I'm going to ask you to vote in on. I'll let you know when we hit those items. Shannon, if it's okay with you, I would like to read something to.
Of course.
Okay, wonderful. Okay. All right. So before we begin, I wanted to acknowledge and thank all my fellow commissioners and town staff for support, time, and for your service for the town of Farmington, because after all, service is why we're here, right? As this is my final TPZ meeting, I wanted to take a moment to share some of my thoughts and the hopes that the next chair and all future commissioners will continue to work in the best interest of this wonderful town that we call home. For those that have not yet served on this commission, you're looking at town residents who sacrificed their time and energy into the responsible development of property around town. This means that we follow the plan of development and state regulations. Sometimes that requires we make hard decisions, but as responsible stewards, we don't take this unique position lightly. As the chair and member of this commission, I have worked very hard to ensure that our meetings are conducted professionally, responsibly, respectfully, and have solicited the participation and feedback from you, the community, as much as we possibly could to arrive at the best decisions for the town of Farmington. Contrary to what some people may wrongly believe, our results are only possible through collaboration and dutifully following the rules that govern our proceedings. We always conduct our business on behalf of the town with the required advance notice so that fellow citizens can participate. Unfortunately, there are legions of these keyboard warriors out there and that make unjustified and uncalled for accusations and spread lies and misinformation about many subjects on the internet, and this includes town business. I personally have been victimized by a few residents in our town who have made false and defamatory comments about my character and how I have executed my responsibilities regarding the 402 Farmington Avenue and the Moriah Road development projects. As many of you know, I'm a Realtor by profession, and there are those in our community who apparently feel that certain professions are just corrupt by nature and therefore have no place serving on the TPZ commission due to a perceived conflict of interest. The key to this problem is all about perception. Uninformed and non-participating members of the community might make incorrect assumptions based on the lies spread by these keyboard warriors. Believing these lies and spreading them to others is just plain wrong and serves no legitimate purpose in the responsible development of our beautiful town. And as your chair, who has devoted hundreds upon hundreds of hours of my time for no monetary benefit whatsoever, this is completely unacceptable and quite frankly hurtful. This type of behavior works directly against the best interests of the town because good people will be less likely to volunteer to serve if they feel that their service will be relentlessly and unjustifiably attacked by these keyboard warriors. All that being said, I'm proud of everything that we have accomplished on the commission while I have been privileged to have been its chair. I am confident that my fellow commissioners will carry this torch forward and continue the good work of maintaining and enhancing the beauty and the small town charm that we all love about Farmington. Regardless of your professional occupation, we welcome all town residents to volunteer their time if they so desire. I live here. I work here. I. Thank you. I feel better. Thank you. All right. Let's begin. All right. So we're going to start with the new business items. We have several items to. Oh, yeah, we need to do this. Yeah, no, no, okay. Our secretary needs to leave the read the legal notice. Go ahead, Scott. Thank you.
Yep. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid in-person and online public hearing on Monday, December 11th, 2023 at seven o'clock PM in the town council count. I can't talk now. I should have just let it go. Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications. Michael Lavoie, application for a special permit for home business to keep poultry and raise rabbits at 12 Winthrop Drive, R9 Zone. Brian Burbank, application for special permit for construction of accessory structure, detached garage in excess of 700 square feet located at 10 Glen Hollow Drive, R20 Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation in person is at One Montage Drive, Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, or online participation is via the link to the meeting on the Town of Farmington's website at the address on your screen. A copy of this proposal is online at the address on the screen or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, the 16th day of November, 2023, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Ina St. James Chair.
Thank you, Scott. Well done. All right. The first new business item in front of us is an application from Creative Dimensions. It's a sign application for property located at 1690 New Britton Avenue. And who do we have, Shannon?
I believe we've got Jessica Fetzer on the phone.
Yes, that's correct.
Hi there.
Jessica, if you could just introduce yourself and provide a summary of your application for the commission, please.
Sure. My name is Jessica Fetzer. I'm an account manager at Creative Dimensions. Mot Corporation has hired us to fabricate a few signs, one of them of which is an exterior sign. They're moving into the property at 1690 New Britton Avenue. This location has an existing detached monument sign, and we are looking to just add a new tenant panel to the existing sign. We would not be altering anything else on that sign.
Sounds like it's pretty straightforward. Okay, all right. I'm going to turn it over to the commissioners to see if there are any questions. Patrick, let's start with you. Any questions?
No questions.
Scott?
No questions. Thank you.
Liz? No questions.
Matt?
No questions.
Matthew?
No questions.
And Bobby?
No questions.
All right. It is pretty straightforward swap, right? So no illumination, the way it is today. It sounds like we have no questions, so we need a motion and a second, please.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign application by Creative Dimensions for 1690 New Britton Avenue.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, you are all set. You'll be hearing from Shannon or town staff.
You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. All right, moving right along. Bobby, if you can be a voting member on this one?
Sure.
All right, awesome.
And then.
Technically, yeah, please.
Yeah.
That's going to take you longer for both to exit.
Don't leave the building.
You don't have to sit down either.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is an application from Carrier Group Inc. It's a request for 90-day extension of time to file subdivision milar maps for lots 8517, 8518, Moriah Road. All right.
So it's just I'll can provide a brief summary. So there had been a wetland appeal. Subsequent, the wetland appeal was reinstated subsequent to the TPZ approval. It halted then the 90-day clock for the applicant to file their milars. That appeal was dismissed in mid-November. The clock has restarted. Given the holidays and the hiatus, the applicant has requested their first 90-day extension. The commission by statute and by our regulation is allowed to grant up to two 90-day extensions. This would be the first one. It will start at the end of that first 90 days. It doesn't start today, so he gets the full benefit of the first 90 days. Again, just with our meeting schedules and holidays, we had to do it tonight so that we don't get caught behind the eight ball. So it's a standard practice.
Yes.
They do have a meeting set with us with staff to after the first year to run through comments, everything that's going to be needed so that all the documentations can be put in place.
Yeah, it's a fair request. And like you said, with the year-end holidays, it's just a formality. Everyone is good. All right, so we need a motion and a second, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for a 90-day extension of time by the Carrier Group, Inc. to file subdivision milar maps for lots 8517 and 8518, Moriah Road.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all set. Do you want to grab?
Thank you.
Yeah, Patrick. Thank you. I'm working on the name of the next one. So all right. Sorry. Okay, the next item is an application from Uxell Cockrock. It's for a property located at 864 Plainville Avenue, and it's an application that we'll be accepting this evening for special permit. And we need a motion and a second, and please read it in its entirety. Yeah, all right. Okay. You're up.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the application for special permit by presented, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to accept the application for special permit by Uxell Cockrock. So, yeah. At located at 864 Plainville Avenue for home business, commercial kitchen in the R20, R30 zones and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of January 22nd, 2024.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, application accepted. Thank you. Moving right along, the next one is an application from Douglas Nash for property at 18 Fairview Drive. And we need a motion and a second, please.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Douglas Nash of 18 Fairview Drive for a special permit to raise 17 poultry in the R20 Zone and schedule public hearing with a recommended hearing date of January 22nd, 2024.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, application accepted. Next one is an application from Kerry Courier for property located at 35 Fairview Drive. And we need a motion and a second to accept.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Kerry Courier located at 35 Fairview Drive for special permit to raise 13 poultry hens in the R20 Zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of January 22nd, 2024.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, application approved. Next one is an application from Q Wan Chen for property located at 902 Farmington Avenue.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by K Wan Chen of 902 Farmington Avenue for a special permit for personal service shop nail salon in the FP Zone and schedule public hearing with a recommended hearing date of January 22nd, 2024.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, application accepted. Then, am I going too fast? It's okay. Everyone, okay, good. All right. I should have asked that earlier. Then, yeah, you'll be busy on the 22nd.
There's some decent size.
Yep.
Yeah. Nah, it'll be okay. Yeah, we've looked at them. That should be.
Okay.
All right.
That should be okay.
Newsman Peter.
I know. I'm sorry. I won't be here.
She says a little smile.
All right, it's, it's all good. All right, the next one is an application from John Sinise. It's for property located at 222 Talcott Notch Road. We need a motion and a second to accept.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by John Sinise for property at 222 Talcott Notch Road for two lot subdivision of 222 Talcott Notch Road and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of January 22nd, 2024.
Okay, and second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, application accepted. And then the last one. Bobby, we'll need you to step in, please.
Yeah, do I have to lead for this one, Shannon? No.
No, but yeah, you would not be participating. Okay. So it's an application, excuse me, for from Carrier Holdings LLC for property located at 34 West District Road. We need an motion and a second, sorry.
Get out of the routine.
Yes.
I'd like to make to make a motion to accept the application by Carrier Holdings LLC for 34 West District Road for a three-lot subdivision and special permit to construct three homes in excess of 2,400 square feet of finished living area in the R30 Zone and schedule public hearing with a recommended hearing date of January 22nd, 2024.
Oh, February.
Feb. Oh.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, I must have the old.
It's okay.
All right, excuse me, let me. Oh, because it says on here.
Correct. We had a correction midday or early today.
Okay.
To February 12th, 2024.
With a recommended hearing date of February 12th, 2024.
Good job. And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, application accepted. Thank you. And thank you. I should have reminded you, Liz.
No problem.
All right, so that took care of new business. Now we're moving on to the public hearing portion. This is the portion where you, the public, participate, whether you're here in person or online, and we're very happy you're here. The first item in front of us, it's an application that is being continued from the November 6th meeting. It's an application from Noreen Galvin for text amendment to the zoning regulations, Article 4, Section 21, regarding accessory apartments. All right, so where do we leave?
And that's just for the record, I missed last week's last meeting, but I am caught up and prepared to discuss and potentially vote if it comes to that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, you got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, Shannon, please bring us up to date. Like, we've talked about this for some time.
Certainly. So we do have the Galvins on the phone. Both John and Noreen are on. And this is a continuation from the November meeting. And as I explained at the November meeting, that the Galvins, having listened to and even participated at one point during our Affordable Housing Workshop sessions, were anxious to see a detached accessory dwelling unit amendment to the regulation and put forth one of their own volition. And Garrett and I reviewed it. It needed more work in order to appropriately carry through our regulations. So we used theirs as a benchmark and then continued in the draft before you. That is, that is up on the screen and has been posted to the website since before the November meeting. It's in the Town Clerk's office, and it also went to CROG, was a full comprehensive rework of the regulation. And what's before you is how it carries through all of the residential zones and the references to an attached accessory dwelling unit as well as detached accessory dwelling unit. And then the last two pages are a full comprehensive really rewrite of what had been the accessory apartment regulation, and we have renamed it accessory dwelling unit and provided information. Can't get the page down to work here. Provided definitions for accessory dwelling unit and attached accessory and detached accessory dwelling unit. And then there's general provisions that apply to both. And then specific for attached accessory dwelling unit and specifics for detached accessory dwelling unit. Mr. Galvin is on the phone, and since the application did really initiate with him, he's got his hand raised. I was going to let him.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Speak and provide information. So John, you should be able to unmute your microphone as a panelist yourself and go ahead and offer any comments to the commission. His hands raised. John, are you going to unmute your microphone? There we go. Maybe? Nope.
How's that?
There we go. You're good.
Okay. First of all, Shannon was is very kind in saying her and Garrett needed to do a little bit more work. It's they did everything. So the proposal that you see tonight is really their work product, and I really appreciate their, their help with that. Just by way of background, catch everyone up who may not have been involved in the process. Connecticut, the state of Connecticut mandates that each municipality develop a five-year affordable housing plan. And the TPZ worked with a consultant, conducted surveys of residents, and held public meetings to develop Farmington's Affordable Housing Plan. That housing plan was adopted by the TPZ and Town Council in 2021, so about two, two and a half years ago. One of the key recommendations in the Affordable Housing Plan was that Farmington will lax its ADU policies, which are very, very strict. And that's not a surprise because if you look across everyone's five-year plans in not just Connecticut, but in many states, ADUs are considered a best practice in providing more affordable housing, whether it's large A affordable or small A affordable. Okay. In 2022, just maybe as an aside, the legislature adopted an ADU plan for all Connecticut municipalities. But it did give each town the ability to opt out of the regulations. TPC and Town Council decided to opt out of the state plan. And the main reason being to keep control of the process so that you could tweak the plan, you know, roll it out incrementally, tweak it without having to go through a state process. So I think that was a very good decision. So what Shannon and Garrett have developed, I see this as the affordable housing or creating more housing stock as being the goal. And the Affordable Housing Plan as being the strategy. And I think this point, we've litigated whether ADUs are a good thing, whether Farmington wants them. That's been in the public domain, many public hearings, Town Council, TPC. I think right where we're at now is the execution point. How do we put it in place? And that's what this proposal is. What do we do and who do we do it to? My feeling about the proposal is I think it's relatively conservative and incremental, which is not a bad thing. And a couple of the differences, and I'll just use relative to the Connecticut plan, which is pretty typical actually for states that have ADUs. This plan calls for ADUs up to 700 square feet. There are some exceptions, but for discussion purposes, let's just, you know, figure out the typical ADU being 700 square feet versus the states allowing them up to 1,000 square feet. The state also doesn't allow the municipalities to delineate where ADUs can be in terms of zone lot size. There may even be some easement on setback requirements. But the big difference between the state and this proposal is the state proposal is right of use, meaning as long as you meet the requirements, the zoning requirements, or whatever the policy requirements are, the town plan, you get a permit from the town planner. That's it. This proposal requires anything other than an attached ADU to go through a special permit process. Now, the special permit, I hope, is not an opportunity for, you know, people to just knock ADUs down because they don't like ADUs or they feel renters aren't, you know, on par with owners or whatever the case may be. It's meant as you want to make sure you checked all the boxes. The zoning is right, the setbacks are right, and probably most importantly is to make sure somebody isn't building something really weird, you know? So there is a and this is where it can get a little dicey, but you really kind of want to make sure that the ADU is at least aligns with or, you know, somehow looks like the house that it's, that it's behind. So what you have here is sort of belt and suspenders, right? Everything goes through Shannon's shop. It makes sure it meets all the requirements. Then it comes to TPZ, who gets a final look at the plans. And Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong, but there would be also public hearings there so that neighbors of people planning a specific ADU would get to weigh in. So it's an added layer. It's something the state battled with too and didn't want to see, but I think again, it's for rolling this out for the first time in Farmington, who has not had ADUs, unlike West Hartford. It's probably the approach to take. It's a little bit more legwork and maybe down the road, it's decided special permits aren't required, whatever the case may be. But I think it's a good, it's a very good major step in the right direction. So that's all I have if looking forward to hearing you guys discuss it. If you have any questions for me or whatever, I'm always happy to put in my two cents. So thank you for allowing me to present.
Thank you. And Shannon, the special permit would be a public hearing, right?
Correct. So the way the regulation is set, that the attached ADU up to 700 square feet and no more than one bedroom would be permitted as a right in all single-family zones, which is in keeping with how the accessory apartment regulation currently reads. So someone today could come in for an accessory apartment of their home. And if it's, at this point, it read 650 square feet or one bedroom, but it was just a permit with the zoning office. There was no meeting required with TPZ. And then if we get to an attached ADU greater than 700 square feet or containing two bedrooms, then a special permit is required. That is also consistent with how the accessory apartment regulation currently reads. And then what is new is the detached ADU requiring a special permit and will be permitted in just select zones, the R80, R40, R30, and R20 residential zones. And those, in each case, in every case, a detached ADU will require a special permit.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let's cycle through questions of the commissioners and then we'll open it up to the public. So Patrick.
No, I have no questions at this point.
Okay. How about you, Scott?
I'll just mention first, as Matt did, I wasn't at the last meeting either, but got caught up, viewed the video, and I'm prepared to vote. But at this point, I don't have any question.
Okay, Liz?
One question in reading through the new requirements, talking about corner lots and things like that. That was just trying to, I was, I was reading through it and wasn't in a position to like get on a map or something to look. Basically, it's just talking about that things need to be appropriately placed if it's a detached. Is that correct? Where it said it need to be in the middle third or sight lines and longest line.
Correct. And that's consistent with the language that we have for any accessory structure in the residential zone. So it's the same, very same language that we have for if you're putting a shed in. The difference being that a shed can be five feet from the property line. If it is going to be a detached accessory dwelling unit, then it needs to, I'm looking for it here. It needs to meet the.
It's like page 13.
Yeah, I'm looking. It's got to meet, it shall be behind the longest rear wall. It's supposed to meet the side and rear yard setbacks of the zone. I'm looking for it. Should be at least 25 feet. Number four, location. Yeah. Number four, location. Yeah. So, oh, here we go. Right at the top, detached accessory dwelling units. I was in the, into the A, B, and C. Location detached accessory dwelling unit must meet the side and rear yard setbacks of the zone. So, but then the locationally, because we want it to be behind that principal building and it's supposed to be secondary to the main structure, right? So no different than a detached garage or a shed or a barn, whatever. We want it behind that main structure. The difference again is because it will be a dwelling unit, we want it to meet the primary setbacks.
Okay. No, that's great. It's, it, I appreciate the clarity it provides and the consistency. Thank you.
Matt?
Uh, no, no additional questions. Thanks.
Matthew?
No questions for me.
And Bobby?
No questions here.
Quiet group today. All right. So, um, I think ADUs should be, there are a lot of good reasons why they should be allowed. And, um, I was thinking about the detached units and like aging parents. You know, so like if I add it over my garage, my in-laws probably wouldn't like going up the stairs, you know? So I, I think it's probably time. I like the fact that it's case by case. Because I do think, you know, one of the things that we are asked to consider are our neighborhoods. And I do think that, um, placement is very important. Especially like when we're dealing with a detached construction, any additional parking, any runoff. I think that has to be considered. I was thinking about my own property a few years ago in the back. There was a brand new home that was built. The builder maybe wasn't very careful with the, the way the land was protected, but since that time, our backyard floods. So if another neighbor did a ADU, you know, and, and it was abutting a property or close to it, I, I, I probably would have an issue with it. It already floods and it could even flood more depending how it's done. So that's just, I guess, a comment. What, um, the couple of things that I was thinking about though were, I actually have a suggestion for language change, but, um, the one thing on top of my list is affordable housing. I, I know it's not, um, something that we can say, hey, the town, can you, um, can this be affordable housing? Can you track it, application, whatever? We're clearly not there, nor do you want to be doing that. But can we recommend? Can we put just the sentence that we recommend that it be affordable? Would, would that be a problem to say? Just something to consider, like when applicant is looking through this regulation?
I think that's captured in the Affordable Housing Plan. So I think that, that thought is there within the Affordable Housing Plan. And the regulation is really meant to be regulatory.
Okay, all right.
We could look.
Just my suggestion, um, you know, I was also, I'm just going to go through my couple of comments.
Sure. We could put a general purpose statement at the top that the intent is to, you know, we could put a purpose statement at the top.
I don't like that idea.
Why?
Because you, you're contradicting what you said earlier with your in-laws or if you have a college student coming home.
Yep.
Now you're limiting what you can do with it because you're putting in the affordable.
No, it's a, just a sentence that we are recommending if, if possible to make it affordable. I, I don't think it's a mandate. It would be a suggestion just to keep that in mind. But, uh, it's just a suggestion. So it ties back to the Affordable Housing Act, but.
So we could, we could put a purpose. So there's a purpose statement that could go at the top that would basically tie this, the genesis of this.
Yeah, exactly.
The Affordable Housing Plan, similar to the midpoint development district and, um, the special floating innovation zone that we've, um, that's tied to the POC with some specific language. So we could put a purpose statement at the top that ties this to the Affordable Housing
Thank you.
Plan. And I think it can be as simple as that without necessarily mandating, right? As we've talked that it's, we can't really mandate that these be affordable. The logistics of that isn't feasible.
Thank you. I, I would like to see that. Um, I was thinking about sewer. So let's, should, if it's, so it's, you know, more people, I don't, should, should there be an extra sewer cost?
Uh, that gets handled. So if it's on a septic system, then they have to go back to Farmington Valley Health to get permission for the system to either verify that the existing system can accommodate the additional bedroom.
Okay.
Or upgrade the system or put in a mini system for this unit, whatever, and, and meet the separation distance requirements. So that's a whole separate animal that resides with Farmington Valley Health if it's on a septic system. If it's on Town of Farmington sewer, if depending upon how the connection is done, there would be a connection fee and then they get charged the municipal rate for sewer, just as every other home would.
Okay, thank you.
So there, yeah, I'm, the connection fee, I don't think we've worked through, but yes, there would.
Okay.
If it's a new lateral coming in off the street, there'll be a connection fee.
And then the only other thing I had is on page 13, B1. So again, a suggestion, so right now, the B1 says, no accessory dwelling unit shall exceed 30% of the heated habitable floor area of the principal dwelling unit. I, um, it's not a concern, but, um, if my home had a finished basement, this could be much larger. My suggestion is to put above ground between heated and habitable. So it would read, no accessory dwelling unit shall exceed 30% of the heated above-ground habitable floor area. Cause I think the calculation, you could it.
We'll take a look, but we have that defined in the regs because the, uh, under our zoning for the residential uses, they already, we look at habitable and non-habitable area and the habitable space is already defined as being above ground and not including the basement.
Okay, because.
So that's in, that's already in the regulation, just in a different section for habitable, the definition of habitable floor area.
So, um, about adding above ground in front of habitable, you, you feel it's, it doesn't belong there?
I'm saying it's already accounted for in the regulation.
Okay, because without it, I was thinking of the home that's 2,200 square feet. If you count the basement, that's a pretty large apartment, you know, it could be 1,200 square feet.
Right. What I'm saying is we don't, that by definition, we do not include the basement area, whether it's finished or unfinished in any of our habitable floor area calculations.
So why not say it? I don't know.
It's already defined in another spot.
Do you know that? But okay, that's fine. Those are my comments about this, uh, regulation. And, uh, definitely it has come a long way. Um, I think, um, Mr. Gavin is right, you know? He brought it to our attention, but you and staff have done an amazing job. Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments before we turn it over to the public? Questions? We're good? Okay. All right. Uh, again, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here online that wishes to speak regarding this uh, application for text amendment, this is your chance. Uh, for people that are here, please come to the podium, uh, give us your name and address and, uh, let us know. If you have any questions, comments, concerns. Okay, great.
Want me here?
Right there. Yeah, at the podium. Yes, thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jeffrey Moors. I'm here with my wife, Pat. We're at, uh, 152 Wood Pond. Um, it's an R20 zone. Uh, in the interest of fair disclosure, Noreen Galvin is our next door neighbor. And they have indicated that they are, uh, hoping to put in an in-law apartment. Uh, I don't really want to talk much about that tonight. We're not categorically opposed to it. What does concern me however, is, uh, we're on Woodridge Lake. The lots run about a half an acre, maybe a little bit more. So impervious surfaces are a big concern of ours. And I don't have the latest version of that. However, we were in conference with Shannon and Garrett, and I think I understand where you're going with this. And if I do understand it correctly, these new regulations will allow a homeowner to put up a new freestanding apartment within space limitations and rent it out commercially. The way it stands now, you're, it has to be attached to the main house. I suppose if you had an in-law apartment over garage, uh, that would be fine because it wouldn't increase the footprint. But the main concern is, um, it really impinges on the single-family flavor of the neighborhood to allow apartment rentals in a single-family neighborhood. And people could very easily decide to put up a brand new apartment. My sense is you probably won't be able to do an Airbnb, but you certainly could do a rental. And that's going to be a little tough on our neighborhood. I suspect if you had an R80 or an R40, the impact wouldn't be nearly so great, but on a half an acre lot, that really is a problem, particularly in our area where environmental is a serious concern. So that's pretty much all I had to say. If you folks have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to speak regarding this application? Okay, how about online, Shannon?
Uh, yes, we do have a hand raised online for comments on public hearing one. Mr. Bombara. You should be able to, yep, if you could introduce yourself and, um, go ahead and address the commission.
Okay. Uh, first is checking. You guys can hear me?
Yes.
Great. Uh, yeah, my name is Jay Bombara. I live at, uh, 13 Mountain Road in Farmington. And I guess I have a two, two, uh, general areas to speak of. The first is process. I really was not aware this was happening until very recently. And this is taking me by surprise and you know, I think what you're suggesting here is probably the biggest change to the zoning regulations since they were adopted. 1,200 foot structures. I mean, I grew up in a 1,200 square foot house. So you're taking single-family, um, zoning and you're making it two-family zoning, uh, with one wave of the hand, uh, not by zone by zone. I know that it's not all zones, but both zones. Um, so what I'm really suggesting is on the process. And I, look, I know that, uh, Shannon and the town staff, as well as you guys are well-versed in what's legally required, but what I would strongly urge is that you put this on pause. Uh, and you do some advertising and you try to do some town hall meetings to discuss uh, whether it's affordable housing, which this is not, as it's been pointed out, there's no requirement that it be affordable. But, uh, that you, you put it on pause and you actually beat the bushes a little bit and try to get people out. I did call a few people ahead of time just to make sure that it wasn't just me and that this has all been well-vetted and everybody's aware of what's going on and everybody seems to think it's fine. Uh, which I'm kind of surprised by, and I'm not necessarily against it, by the way. I I'm kind of on the fence, but I recognize what a tremendous change this is going to be to the town, uh, to all of these neighborhoods. Uh, I live in, uh, the historic district. So I just, I just think as a, as a process thing and this, and then, and again, I'm not questioning anybody's motives, but when I hear the previous speaker say that this was put out by somebody who wants to put a unit at their house. I mean, to me, that you're legislating right now and legislating really should be driven more by what the town thinks is good. I don't know, and maybe, um, you have brought this before the town council and you've gotten their backing. I'm not aware that I've read anything about that, but I'm not saying that you haven't. I don't know. But you know, this is really something that needs to, to, to have a really thorough vetting. And so then getting into some of the, uh, substance, I mean, a, a few things jump out at me, for instance, which could use more vetting as well as perhaps more fleshing out if we're going to actually adopt something like this. I mean, I, I can't even imagine what the enforcement mechanism is. You know, it says that you have to own the house or the, or the ADU, but who's really going to know that? Who's going to enforce that? Um, the six-month, uh, lease term, I don't know who's going to enforce that. You know, you're talking about, if you do do it right, you would probably need some sort of staffing and/or some sort of reporting requirements or something like that. If I pause, I was going to just pause and look at my notes as I was listening. I was writing a few things down, but yeah, I mean, that, that's all, that's all I can really say. I mean, I, I guess I would ask or suggest that everybody, uh, that's on the board, uh, you know, think for a second, uh, you know, you all live in neighborhoods and if you buy a house that's on a single-family lot and all your neighbors are as well, and then you wake up the next day and somebody's building a 1,200 square foot house, uh, right next to you and, which by the way, brings additional cars. I mean, I know there's something about parking in there, but the reality is there's no restriction on where you can park cars on your property. So those cars could be parked anywhere. But, but to really think about that and I, and I, you know, again, I, I, the, the intention, I think of the people involved in this are, are good. I'm not questioning that. I just think that you're talking about the most significant change in zoning. And, and I guess the final thing I would say is what, what have other towns done? I mean, it would be good to see that. Um, I think if you do pass something like this, you will have a lot of developers or people interested in, uh, real estate and maximizing the money they can make off of it coming in and buying up properties and uh, seeing that they can put in extra units. Um, so you might actually, especially if no other towns are doing this, you might see the Farmington become sort of the center for this kind of a, uh, development. So, I, I mean, I guess that's all I can say. Again, I, 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 I can't say it. I guess I'll say it again. I strongly urge you to consider the process here and what you are doing. I mean, it may seem like not significant, but it's incredibly significant. You really are changing the, uh, the, the zoning and the, and the potential, uh, face of way a lot of these neighborhoods look. So I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Shannon?
Uh, we do have another hand up. It's Mr. Galvin. So I'll just ask if there's anyone else, uh, that has called in to offer comment on the application for the accessory dwelling unit regulation, uh, modification to raise your hand and you'll be addressed, uh, acknowledged to address the commission. Okay. There are no other hands raised other than Mr. Galvin's. Madam Chair, would you?
Sure.
Like me? Okay. Mr. Galvin, go ahead.
Thank you. You can hear me again, I hope.
Yes.
Okay, uh, just, uh, a couple of comments in terms of, yes, we did, uh, initiate the zone change, uh, application. But certainly didn't initiate, uh, a major, we could talk about whether this is a major zone change or not. This started back in 2020, by the state mandating a five-year affordable housing plan. And the thinking here is that these are not large A affordable mandated right now, because nobody will build them if they, if they were, um. But by opening up opportunities for seniors, single professionals, et cetera, you create more housing and that, that basically drives prices down. So it started back in 2020 and there were townwide meetings, discussions and surveys. So to, uh, Mr. Bombara's point, uh, this just didn't, wasn't initiated by us and didn't just happen. So it's, anyway, that's, you know, yes, we want to build an ADU over a detached garage in a finished, in a space that's already finished. We're just talking about adding plumbing and electrical. But our specific need is not the issue here. The issue is what's good for Farmington. I'd also make a correction in terms I'd also make a correction in terms of the 1,200 square feet. That may be allowed in some special instances, but it's 700 square feet, not, not 1,200 square feet. In terms of enforcement and permeable surface, I would say both of those already issues when somebody builds an attached ADU, which is already in the regs. And I'm sure that the town and conservation, including the lake, has a process for determining whether there is enough permeable surface. So that's, that's sort of taken up in the approval process, which is already on the books. And in terms of enforcement, of people renting when they shouldn't be, I venture to say that of all of the attached ADUs now, which require that the person be a a relative, then, you know, I wonder very much if, if that is, that's already an issue, right? I mean, the town is, town planner cannot go, you know, questioning people and checking birth certificates. So yeah, is that an issue? Could be an issue. It'll always be an issue. And for that matter, we don't know if people are renting out their homes as Airbnbs. So I think when that happens, it's really an exception. I don't think exceptions should drive, especially rare exceptions, should drive policy. In terms of it being a major zone change, and I've mentioned in previous meetings, and this is just an educated guess as somebody who's built ADUs. And by the way, I, the last two ADUs I've built were built on 3,000-square-foot lots in 19th-century historic homes on the Historic Register in California, which has very strict guidelines for restoring historic homes. And I built a detached ADU on one and a converted garage on the other. If you drove by, you wouldn't be able to tell that they're there. And I won an award for best historic renovation in 2021 and for the second one in 2022. And I don't say that to brag, although I am proud of the awards. It's to say that this concept that people are going to build houses in, in your backyard is a little bit overwrought. And then finally, the number of units that's going to change the character. First of all, the character is something that even the state says board should not really be taken into account because it's just nebulous. What does that mean, you know? And it opens the door. And I'm not saying this is the case for the people involved here or any of the residents or board or anyone else, but it really opens up to NIMBYism, right? And in case, this case, it's not in my backyard, you know, it's, or not in my neighbor's backyard either. So that's, that's kind of nebulous. You really have to come up with specific objections, safety, infrastructure, cost to the town. And in addition to the extra sewer charges and so forth, a typical ADU is probably going to generate an additional 2,000 to 3,000 in tax revenues for the town. So this is revenue positive, not revenue negative. And then finally, I would say the number of units. I know for the town of Fairfield, which is double the size, my town here in California, which is about 60% of the size. And for the other towns I've seen, my best estimate would be that you might see three to five of these ADUs built a year. I think what you'll see is a dozen applications and when people see the cost, they just won't build them. This is very, very, very few number of units, which is unfortunate because this is low-hanging fruit. But it's a small change. It's a very small change. As a matter of fact, you know, for real affordable housing lobbyists, they consider this sort of a throwaway. It's really multifamily housing that they focus on. So and again, by keeping this in, in the domain of Farmington TPZ, if Farmington tends to be the outlier, and I mean really a big, big outlier, and all of a sudden there's dozens of these requests, then you know, the board can also put a moratorium on them, limit the numbers, et cetera. But the reality is, is that if you drive through West Hartford and towns that have these, you don't even know they're there unless you ask. So just my response to some of the criticisms that come up, and by the way, those criticisms come up in every town that adopts ADUs. And the reality is, in, it's true in Fairfield, it's true in California, it's true in Oregon, Vermont and New York. The response to building these ADUs was so low that those states have gone out of the way to encourage people to be the ADUs by giving workshops. New York is giving people $125,000 in startup costs. I think Vermont is 40,000, Califor, no, California's 125, New York is 50. So the thought that people are going to be building these willy-nilly all over town, changing the character is, it's just not the reality. So that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Galvin. Anyone else online?
There are no other hands raised at the moment. I'll ask one more time. If anyone's called in to offer comment on the ADU regulation, please raise your hand. She'll be acknowledged to address the commission. And Madam Chair, there are no other hands raised.
Okay.
Got a question?
Sure.
Shannon, over the summer during our many working sessions, I think there was a chart that you or Garrett put together that looked at the surrounding towns. I don't know if you have that on the hand or not. If you don't, that's okay. But from my recollection, Farmington was one of the most sort of restrictive ADU towns in this sort of surrounding area. And most of the other towns have sort of done what we're sort of contemplating tonight. I, I think that's fair from what I remember. I, I was, I was thinking about the chart as we were kind of talking about this tonight.
Yeah, and I was as well, wondering if I can get my fingers on it. So I'm going to look to Garrett. Do you, one, do you recall? Because Garrett did most of the research. So do you?
I'm putting on the spot here, Garrett. I appreciate that. That's why I got here.
So yes, I did do a chart. I think it was either late of 2020 that I actually put it together. So some things may have changed with towns. I didn't really update it because it's not something we were looking to do at the, at the time. But I did have a chart with looking at some of our surrounding towns and similar towns. So I pulled in Burl and South Winds are kind of towns that were not super dissimilar. Some of that has changed. Obviously, some towns that are doing what Farmington's doing, they're looking at revising the regulations. I have not updated that. I can share it with everyone if they want. I can, obviously can't do it right now.
Yeah, no, no, it's okay.
But yeah, that, yeah, I did have a chart. There have been some towns that do updating. The Capital Region Council of Governments did a survey of the towns. About 60% opted out of the ADU regulation. But a good percentage of them either already had an ADU regulation or they didn't want the state regulation, or they were working on revising theirs anyway, which I believe is what Farmington told Krag we were going to do. We were looking at revising them anyway.
Right, okay.
And as far as the conversations, I think in the town newsletter, Shannon, right? We had a blurb
Correct.
that talked about the workshops.
Correct, about the work sessions. We absolutely did have a notice in the town newsletter regarding the work sessions. I believe it went in the summer newsletter.
So this has
Or spring. I'd have to go back and take a look, but it was in the newsletter that gets mailed to every home.
Okay, great. Thank you. If you can get the chart, great. But if not, you know, I remember.
Yeah, I'm I'll be clicking and opening and I don't know.
It's all good.
Do you have any thought on if we put it up on the SharePoint? The Housing Rooms.
It might have been, I think it might be late touch. No.
Yeah.
I mean, can you, can you, from, from memory, right? I thought Farmington was relatively restrictive compared to the surrounding towns, like.
Right. So Farmington had current, obviously the regulations that stands today has a restriction that you have to be related by blood or domestic help. To whoever's living the apartment, part of this regulation provision is to remove that.
Correct.
So you can directly rent to anyone. Additionally, in the existing regulation, there was a requirement that you decommission the apartment. So you spend all that money to, to, to build it. And then once it's no longer needed, your relative moves into living, someone doesn't need to be there anymore. You're supposed to decommission it and make it part of the house. So you have to kind of toss out all the fixtures, fits and finishes you had purchased to do that.
Okay. Great, thank you.
And then we added the detached, right?
Yep.
Yeah, Matt, I'm sorry. I'm not going to be able to get my
That's okay.
I'd be I'll make everybody know. And I don't even know specifically. I knew we'd worked on it. And then we got talking really about inclusionary zoning a lot this summer. And then came back to, so we were a little bit back and forth. I apologize. I
No, no, again, from memory and if fellow commissioners remember, I think we were relatively restrictive and all the other towns have gone this sort of route, right, the detached and getting out of the sort of relative needs to be a relative to live in, in the, in the unit. So
Correct.
All right. Thank you, Garrett. Thank you, Shannon.
All right. So we heard from some of our neighbors. We've been at it four months. Everything has been documented. We obviously have done the meetings live. I you know, the one thing that I feel good about that it is, is going to be a special permit. So it is going to be case by case. I don't think there's going to be a run on ADUs. I think there will be financial restrictions. My feeling about it. Do we, so do we close today? Can we continue? I know there's a lot of change happening and we've had the benefit of working on this for months, Shannon.
So basically, it's the commission's discretion. With the exception that this is not a, this is not, it did not originate as a town-sponsored application. So this is an outside applicant. So we're at our 35 days, right? So we had to, we accept the application. Once you open the hearing, there's 35 days to act and close or to close it, excuse me. And then it's 65 days to vote. So if it is going, if you're not going to close it this evening, then we technically need an extension from the Galvins. And in order to do so, and then it would be helpful, I guess, if there's specific information or specific things you want answered. And it would not be heard at January 8th. It would be pushed to the January 22nd because we are not doing hearings on the 8th because of the commissioner training. And we will have eternity de crescendo here that night. That's why everything is on the 22nd, right? So we've we will have a meeting, but we'll be doing just new business and really basic stuff for about a half hour before we do the commissioner training.
Okay, I, if, if you can add just a statement how it ties into, you know, the little
Absolutely, a purpose at the top.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We talked about everything else that that I had on my list. Patrick, are you, are you comfortable to vote or?
Actually, I would, I have a few questions.
Sure.
So the first one, just to clarify, when you say the biggest change is that, so it's, it's going to be the detached with a special permit. But it's also the fact that the attached are, it's not going to be, you're changing the language on whether it's not, it doesn't have to be family only.
Correct.
So that's the big change in terms of this regulation, right? It's, it's pretty much what we're saying is now we're opening it up to
Correct.
Public, right? So I just wanted to
It could be rental, correct.
Right.
Yes, you're right.
Okay. And I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the, that it's a special permit process, but in reality, that portion of it's not. Impervious. So how is that handled? Let's say somebody comes before, you know, the town and wants to add 700 square feet. Is that something, I mean, I'm assuming that's looked at during the building permit process and?
Correct. So we're looking at those things as part of building permit. And if it's coming through at a public hearing, then we are looking at it through an engineering review. A lot of them were requiring rooftops to go into underground infiltrators when possible. Not every soil type will accommodate that, but we at least are getting the first inch and the water quality regulations are changing to require it a 1.3-inch here in the next few months to go into underground infiltrator and then have the overflow out to, to manage at least most of the storms and get that infiltrating into the ground, directly into the ground rather than sheet flow. And we'll take a look at the driveway and the amount of impervious area. In many cases, there's not much change to the, to the driveways.
Right.
And it goes out to the lawn. So it's no different than if somebody was putting up a shed or a, again, a detached garage. So those same thought process, if there's roof leaders, where are they, where are they being directed to? And I, I mean, these are not going to have a basement. So you're not, you're not, the foundation drain type thing isn't the same thought process as you would for a house with a basement. So it's simplified to that extent. And again, so the maximum size, I got a couple of things open here. Let me get the right, the right thing open. The maximum size is going to be dictated. So no accessory dwelling unit shall exceed 30% of the habitable floor area. Again, that's the above ground of the principal dwelling unit. So there's that mechanism as well as the 700 square foot. So it is, it is talked about with the 1,200-square-foot unit size up to 1,200 square foot, no more than two bedrooms. But that 1,200-square-foot, that primary residence would need to be to, right, three times that size in order to get a 1,200-square-foot detached. So you, you're looking at an R80 property.
Right.
Really, that you'd have a 1,200-square-foot, because if you have a
True.
A 2,400 square-foot home, hang on a second. If you have a 2,400-square-foot home, right, the maximum ADU you're going to have is 30%, is going to be 800 square feet.
Right.
Right? So that's going to be your first benchmark. And what we're saying, so even if you have, I don't know, if you have a home that's, say it's a 6,000-square-foot home, we're saying that your ADU can't be 2,000 square feet, which would be the 30%. We're saying the maximum you can have is 1,200 square feet. So we've got both. It's going to work for us in both directions. And we just, as we go through with these things, it's no different than any of the other. It's stepping through each of the line items and go work ourselves through the math to make sure that it's mathematically correct for the proposal that's being put forth.
So, so I'm trying to picture like an R9 zone, right? I don't know what, like Hunter's Ridge, I think of Hunter's Ridge. What's the zoning on Hunter's Ridge, you know?
I can look it up real quick.
Only because I'm familiar with the neighborhood, so it kind of
Sure, but so that, so it would not, the detached dwelling, it only goes down to R20.
Right.
So, but we can pull up Hunter's Ridge real quick.
And then how does the attached portion tie in?
So that would hit the same, so the Hunter's Ridge. There with me, I got to move a couple of things around here. So that's the RDM zone. So it would not you could do an attached accessory dwelling unit. And it would, it's going to run through those same parameters. So the attached in any single-family zone. And I'd have to take a look honestly for the RDM. They are single-family units. And I'd have to take a look at the land area. I don't think we've had, I don't think we've had one any apartment request in the RDM. It's a little different because it is a complex, but so say if you're taking a traditional R9, you go to the Lake Garda neighborhood. Okay, Lake Garda neighborhood, there, a lot of them are 5,000 to 6,000 square foot lots. The RDM is going to be a little difficult because I don't think they own the land.
So R, so the R9, that's 9,000 square feet, right?
R9 is 9,000 square feet, yeah, but some of them are smaller lots.
Is that just because they got grandfathered?
Correct. It's because of the age of the development and they were almost cottages really to like, to the lake at the time. So so you've got your say it's a 9,000-square-foot lot, right? So that's fine, but there's the say it's a nine thousand square foot lot, right, so that's fine, but there's the, the neighborhood is up on the, the screen. And right, so if somebody came in, you know, this house, I don't even know who's, who's home I'm looking at, but this house comes in, right, they clear, there's a garage, that looks like they've got a main house, they've got a garage. If somebody wanted to come in and put an accessory dwelling unit on the second floor, on that second floor of the garage, or the upper level of the garage, they certainly could, under this regulation. And then we would be looking at, we'd, we'd take a look at the size of their habitable floor area, and it's, they can't exceed thirty percent of the habitable floor area. Or up to, if it's a single, uh, single bedroom, seven hundred square feet. Right, and we're saying that the lot, for us, if you're going to have an attached, uh, dwelling unit, is, has to have at least five thousand square feet property area.
Yeah.
Right, in order to accommodate that, and if it's a two bedroom, we're saying it's at least twelve thousand square feet.
Right.
So that would be an R twelve.
So back to the attached, just because I'm, I'm just stuck on the, you know, the incentive of, or how can I put this? The way our regulations are written now, yeah, it's gonna be rare that somebody goes and builds, you know, um, even an attached dwelling, because really, once the person that is, you know, usually, if, let's say it's an in-law or, or a family member, it's usually somewhat temporary, you would think, right?
Sometimes.
Yeah, and it, and you know, to put that money in, just to know that you have to, to, you know, get, get rid of that, once they're no longer there, you know, you're really gonna think twice, and not only that, parking, so I think what I'm most worried about, so if we back up to the, that, that one house that you had with the garage. So you mentioned you can build the accessory dwelling attached, but it could be above the garage, what if somebody came in and said, I wanna connect it by three feet in the back, but I wanna build completely, so I only wanna attach one wall. But I wanna put it off the back, like, is there, is that something that would be allowed to do?
I guess we'd have to look at, again, we're kind of at a case by case basis, and so they could come off the back of the home.
Right.
And have then a separate entrance at the side of the house, so you could have, yeah, you, you could have a, a home, a colonial with a gr- garage, and, and then sidewalk down the side of the colonial, because somebody's put a apartment at the back of the garage, right, so you've got a garage in the colonial, traditional layout. And then they've put an apartment behind the garage rather than over the garage, and you can have a sidewalk that comes down the side of the garage, and then, and an entrance then would be a side entrance into the apartment that's behind the garage, and now you've created almost an L shape for your home. And.
And I know we're talking like scenarios that, you know, that may never happen, but again, like, you know, once you open it up to potentially a second, a second income stream, then it's a little different, right, it's one thing if you know, hey, I'm gonna do this, but it, it, it probably gonna end up costing me more, but I wanna do this for a family member.
Right.
But, you know, in this case, you're gonna build it, you might get creative on how you build it, but it's as of right now, right, it's not.
It's as of right for a one bedroom and up to seven hundred square.
Right.
Correct.
And, and that's.
Anything else, and that's how the current regulation's written, except the current regulation is limited to a family member and domestic assistance.
Right, and so that is the part, I guess, that I'm a little nervous about, is, is just that, because that change, what happens is there's almost no guard against that, right? Um, and then I, you know, may, maybe, like you said, it's not gonna be a runaway thing, it won't be that popular. But then again, if it happens, you know, if that does happen, you know, how are you regulating the parking in that instance, right? There's a lot less chance that somebody's gonna do that, again, if they know that it's not gonna benefit them, you know, financially, long-term, you know, so I'm, I'm kinda hung up on that, that's, I, I'm totally for the regulation with the, you know, with all the safeguards that are in it, with the, with the special permit, I'm just a little bit nervous about that change. So maybe, you know, and now I'm just being honest, that's where I stand with that.
I can, I guess, I can offer two things on that with, with respect to, uh, current operations, there's, we do require that folks agree to only operate their apartments with family members or domestic assistance. But from an enforcement, there is not a, I, I, I can't enforce it unless I've got neighbors coming up and complaining. And even, even then, I can contact the owner, and there's very, there's still a limit as to what I can do from an enforcement standpoint to try to prove that whoever is in that apartment is not a relative, and is not there for domestic assistance. So I guess that would be the first thing under the existing regulation. And with this, it's the same wording that the regulation has with respect to the ownership, and the ownership is a little bit easier to track, because it's, it's on the land records, so the ownership is on the land records. And there's requirements for taxes and filing, and it's required that the owner, the owner is residing at the premise for at least six months out of the year. And so it has to be owner, one of the two units has to be owner occupied.
Right.
So I think that helps with the who a- and how this is rented out, as opposed to allowing both elements to be rented out like a duplex would be.
Right.
So that changes the dynamics, um, a little bit, I think if, you know, yes, you had initially built the apartment for a, um, an elderly parent or whomever, and now it's no longer needed for a parent, it's not needed for a college student, et cetera. And is it, okay, well, I wanna rent it out. I think as an individual homeowner, you're going to be very mindful as to who you're renting that out to, because you are in very close proximity to your neighbor.
Right.
So that's, that's where the ownership requirement comes in, is to try to curtail any issues that may arise with, um, having a, a renter, right, and there's, unfortunately, there's stories of renters that are not things that, that don't go well.
Right.
Right, but it's not necessarily the rule, but I think, again, by having the owner there, it, uh, it helps curtail any issues that may arise.
Right. And I agree with everything you just said, I just, again, I'm still just stuck on the fact, I'm trying to
Sure.
wrap my head around a, you know.
Understood.
Nine thousand square foot lot, and I'm gonna guess that's what Hunter's Ridge was, and I, I just remember myself from living there, what the parking was like, right? And let's say it's as of right, you know, and parking's a nightmare, we have zero, really, there's not much you can do, um, whereas if they are renting it out to somebody else, yes, it's tough to enforce. But at the same time, there is a chance, so I, yeah, I just don't know how to wrap my brain around that change, that's it, I'm just worried about, I'm all for it the other way, because it, it seems like somebody that's gonna do that is doing it for the right reason, and they're gonna have their el- elderly, you know, in-law or whatever it is, and they're gonna have their car parked, if they have a car at all. Versus somebody that comes in and crams three people in there, and they got three different cars, and now I do get it that the owner themselves is not gonna want that, they're not gonna want that, so there's that part of it, so I'm just stuck on that part, I guess.
Okay.
But anyway.
Just one point, technically, you couldn't have three people cramped in, right, it's a one bedroom unit, right, so you can only have.
Well, it'd be a one bedroom unit, I don't know, and then that starts to come into building code and occupancy, which I don't have that information at my fingertips.
Right.
So. So minimum occu- or occupancy requirements.
Yeah, most likely you wouldn't, right?
Right.
So, so one bedroom, you, you have two people.
Yep.
You know. Anyways, that's it, those are my comments.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. Scott.
So, uh, those are all good points, Patrick, and I'm, I'm thinking about all the questions that you, you asked, and to Shannon's point, I wonder if some of that would have been happening already? Just because there's not a lot of enforcement, and I also feel like if we're gonna change the affordability equation in town and create more of this kind of housing stock, are we gonna have to take a little bit of risk that maybe is ca- sort of calculated? And then make some decisions later if we have to, to change things back again, whether it's a moratorium or something like Mr. Galvin said, but I, I don't know that I, I seem to remember in all of our early conversations about affordable housing, us saying, this isn't gonna have a gigantic impact, because we're not, there's not a ton of these that are gonna go up. And we actually moved on to other conversations because of that, so in, in my mind, I don't, I don't think this is gonna have a gigantic impact, but maybe it'll lessen the burden of housing stock in town a little bit while we look at some other things. So if we go back to the question, ready to vote or not, I guess, I'm, I feel comfortable with it, we've gone through a long process, and I think what we have is well thought out, but can be adjusted if it has to be down the road too.
Okay, that's fair, thank you. Liz?
Uh, I, I, everyone has brought up some very good points. And I, I think of, I, I like to believe in people's better angels. I know sometimes that's, comes back and bites me, but through this whole process, we have discussed ADUs, and that, yes, they are a way to address affordability, but many, many times, the phrase low hanging fruit was out there, and that it probably wasn't going to have a huge uh, impact, it was a start and a, um, a few steps down the right path. A couple of things about parking. I just, I, I, right now, I live in a family with four people, we have four cars. Someone would probably take offense with how we park. But when I have two adult children living at home, and that's four cars, and so we, we make it work. But I, I, I am prepared to vote, and I, I really appreciate all the work that's been done to craft and hone this. And yes, it might mean we have to take a little step out there. But I, I appreciate some momentum moving forward as opposed to more inertia.
Okay. Matt?
Yeah, thank you. You know, first, thank you to Mr. Galvin and Ms. Galvin for bringing us, uh, to our attention, and Mr. Galvin for your insight. And, and frankly, wisdom on this issue, um, it was not one I was that familiar with uh, before joining this commission, and I know the town of Farmington has been talking about this since twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, so this has been, uh, many years of talking about housing supply, and we see that in not only here locally, but state and nationally, right, thinking about, uh, housing supply, and this was one of the items on the affordable housing list, right, so just thinking of sort of checking the boxes on that, and this one seems really like, again, I think a minor one to think about housing supply. I'd say two, just in general, I think Farmington ADU is very restrictive, right? Right, we don't allow the owners really to do much in this space, so we're actually giving rights back to property owners in this town, you own a piece of land, right? You're giving you a little bit more say in what you can do with your piece of property that you own, right, we're still putting a whole bunch of restrictions on it, which are really smart, and I appreciate Garrett and Shannon being really smart and thoughtful about this. So we're doing that, and also we're doing a special permit, which doesn't make it easier for people, right, because they still gotta pay for the plans, pay for the engineers, as we all see, pay for the probably not traffic studies, but, uh, uh, you know, all those plans to actually get it to here, and we could still say no, or this commission could still say no, right? And they work with the town staff, so there's still that big check that they have to go through here in town, and we have that special permit process, right, and, and, yeah, it's not the legislative capacity a- as it is for this, but we still get a say, and this commission still gets a say, in if those, as, as someone said, Fairfield, three to five a year in Fairfield, which is much bigger than Farmington, right? So we have one or two a year. Like, for this to get really substantial here in town is gonna take many, many years, as we all know, there's not much land to build on here in town, so there's one, one percent or two percent of actual lots that can be built on, right? So again, for that, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, I'm supportive of this, I think it's, it's, we're, we're sort of, the rest of the surrounding towns have actually already done this, and I don't think it's gonna be a big impact on town, and it gives people an opportunity to use their property the way they want, in, in terms of detached structures, especially detached structures is a big one for me, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. How about you, Matthew?
Uh, it's hard to follow up all that, I agree with everyone. Uh, I echo some of Patrick's concerns, I think, uh, you know, we live in a land of unintended consequences on this commission. But this is, in my estimation, from our rigorous education on this subject, it, this is low risk, right? It's an important first step, I think it's something we should continue to do, is work towards affordability. But I am ready to close, and I'm ready to vote.
Bobby, how do you feel?
Well, I've heard everybody's questions, and I, I can agree with them, and I can absorb them. I just, and, and I don't know why this popped in, but I was thinking, and it's not really a huge difference, but what are the tax implications to the town?
I, I mean, the prob- it would get, the building will be taxed, so no different than, sure.
Yes, that's at a different rate, correct?
Uh, well, it'd be assessed at a different rate than a garage or a, uh, shed would be, because it's habitable space, correct?
So it'd be starting to be taxed as living space, if you will.
Co- correct, and I don't, I don't even profess to understand all the different tax rates and how that is done, but yeah, I presumably it'd be, yes, it would be part of the overall taxation for the property, and presumably different than the shed or garage.
Okay. The only thing that pops into my mind, and I, I, I know it's, it's weird, but I've known a few people that have done it, and it's, it's kinda going to the opposite end of the spectrum of, of Pat, but on the same principle, is, you know, we get these, like, I'll use Devonwood, for example, I mean, they have their, they have their rules and their regulations, but you get a house with an in-ground pool that now decides to have a cool house, and times get tough, and he decides to rent it out, now that becomes his living space that he's renting out, you know, that changes the whole environment, and, but it's like Shannon was saying, you're, you're very close to your neighbors at that point, so you're gonna think twice of who you're renting it to, you know? That being said, I think we've, you know, we've taken a good look at it all year long.
Yep.
And I think, yeah, I think it's ready, time to close.
Okay. Shannon, uh, historic properties? Like, would historic society need to weigh in, or how would that?
Oh, absolutely. So no different than, um, yeah, absolutely, and that would probably be, I would say probably a first step, when they would have to go and get, uh, historic district approval. Probably tan- you know, at least tangentially with TPZ, you know, um, but initial conversation with historic, and then, and back to them then for final design. Absolutely.
Okay.
Particularly, I mean, the historic district, the benchmark is if it's visible from a public way, place or street, so if, if it's unless it's way off the beaten path and tucked way back, that it's not visible from a public street, then absolutely, it will require historic district review.
Patrick, you have a question?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, it sounds like we're ready to close, does anyone have any additional questions? Commissioners, no? Anyone here has additional questions about the regulation, come, come on up to the podium, thank you.
So Pat Moore's, um, one fifty-two Wood Pond Road. My main concern, especially around the lake, that's an enticement for rentals for more people to use the water. It's not just renting a space so that you can go to work easier, or more affordable living accommodations. It's recreational as well. And I will say that the lake is highly compromised, we spend a lot of money every year just trying to keep the algae and the weeds out. And if we allow, additional impervious surfaces on the lake, it is going to fail, the lake will fail, no doubt. It's been a long battle, I've been there since nineteen ninety-three, and I know what it's like to live there. Um, and I've seen the algae problems that we've had. So I'm, obviously, I'm, I'm hoping that this will be discouraged, not encouraged. And the other question I have for you is with all the affordable housing projects that have been approved in town recently, and say in the last three years anyway, what I'm getting out of it, and I may be wrong, but I'd love your input. What I'm getting out of it, and I may be wrong, but I'd love your input. Um, we have numerous apartments building, being constructed in, um, individual sites for, for, for rentals. With a very minimal amount put towards affordable housing. So I don't understand the dynamics behind that and I would love to hear what you have to say about that. Because deferring it, um, to single-family residents. I don't think is a solution and, um, I've heard the word, um. This will have a de minimis effect on the town. And if that's the case, why are we putting all our efforts in this and not having more affordable housing in the units? That can accept the people and the parking. Parking is a problem on our street, I will say that. Um. I don't know if there's limited parking and I don't know whether you can restrict the number of people. But in a recreational area, they're gonna pack them in. Sorry. And I'm not looking forward to that. Um, so I would discourage the use of this. Um, type of living accommodations. In a single-family residential zones. Um, I'm really not in favor of it. Sorry. Guess that's all I have unless you have some questions for me.
Well, thank you for coming up. We appreciate them. What absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, um, this lady comes in. So there's an associate, Lake Association, I'm assuming?
Yes.
How would they have any say with this or are, are town regs overrule that?
Uh, so the association, um, we have been in touch with the association and. It's been a little bit since we've met with them, but they, they are active in any building permit. We require a sign off from the association before our office will sign off on the building permit. So they, and I don't know what all their rules are with respect to that. That's, uh. But yes, we do collaborate with them and require, there's a number of homeowners associations in Farmington. And a number of them, um, we are in touch with and. As the presidents change, we are in touch with the presidents and we require the homeowners association. Sign off a letter from them indicating they reviewed and approved the project as presented before it receives a building permit.
Okay. Is there anyone else on the phone?
Mr. Galvin has his hand raised again.
Oh geez, okay, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Galvin.
No, thank, thank you. I'm sorry, this is the last time. Um, just a response to, to the last, uh, resident, um. I may note that it, it's, it's, uh, the Lake Association. And correct me if I'm wrong, Pat. The Lake Association is not a homeowners association. Uh, I think historically because of their concern, well-founded, uh, about what goes on around the lake. They have asked the town to give them a heads up, if you will. Um, and I think that takes the form of, and we certainly did it because we did a major renovation on the house. Was to run it by the board, tell them what we're doing, uh, make sure that we're protecting debris from going into the lake, et cetera, et cetera. So they don't have, uh. You know, they're not part of the approval process, but certainly want to give them the additional benefit of. You know, the newspaper ad, the town council, everything else that they know what's going on and they can encourage members to, um. To come in. And I, I know the board, uh, the homeowners, I mean. The Lake Association, uh, is well aware that we're doing. I've spoken to members and they're, they're in full support. But I should mention that. I'm pretty sure the vast majority of the members of the Lake Association, Lake Association are West Hartford members. Uh, residents and West Hartford certainly allows, um, allows this. So would. You know, the, I think that's probably why the association, I would certainly have a problem if the association said, well, we're gonna. We're gonna oppose this because for the Farmington members, but not for the West Hartford members. So I don't think the association really has a role here beyond. What they do on every other project, which is to say, hey, have you guys checked the, you know, drainage and all that? In our specific case, it's, uh, you know, it's above an existing structure. So, you know, uh, impervious and. All of that is really, uh, doesn't come into it and we're planning on building a, a one-bedroom, five hundred square feet. So we're not gonna be packing them in. And we have no intention of letting the people use the lake or the garage for that matter. And we have about.
Mr. Galvin, Mr. Galvin, I'm gonna ring in just a bit. Let's stick to the regulation. When you're ready to do your implication, we'll deal with that. I know, it's more a general question that the chair had with respect to. Do, does staff coordinate as we're processing these? And yes, we do. We coordinate with the. The associations and it's universal and consistent with how we do it throughout the town. So. I am gonna ring you in on this if you don't mind, please.
Okay. No, my final word was going to be that, you know, the, uh, for specific issues or exceptions that we've been talking about. Uh, those are really handled in the special permit process. But again, sorry for, uh, going afield.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Mr. Galvin, I, I need to apologize too. Um, I wish you were here in person. Uh, so we would get a chance to meet each other, uh, your popular guest today.
Thank you.
Um, alright.
And we have Mr. Bumbara's hand.
Oh, okay, sure, go ahead.
Mr. Bumbark, uh, sorry, I gotta unmute you.
Thank you. And I, I apologize if I came through. Yeah, I thought I was muted before. Um, uh, it, look, I really appreciate what everybody's done here and I'm not, you know, again, I, I'm not sure what I feel. Uh, because I really haven't thought enough about it. I will say, I, I certainly don't object to. Uh, the accessory type, you know, attached units. I think. Part that I think might be worthwhile to get more public comment on if you can. Um, is the detached. I mean, that's just a very significant, uh, difference. Um. And so I'm not quite sure why and just, we don't, you don't just go with the, uh, the attached and leave that alone. Um, so it, it's mostly a processing. I did want to also point out and then apologies again for, if, if I came through when I shouldn't have. Um, I just, unless I'm reading this wrong, it says you can do up to a thousand feet attached. And twelve hundred square feet detached and Mr. Galvin particularly said it was only seven hundred, which implied it was both, but maybe I'm reading it wrong and that's the case. Um, I can look at the specific language and, and talk to others later.
Um, Madam Chair, may I offer clarification? Okay. Uh, Mr. Bumbara, the very first line, the general, under general posit provisions. No accessory dwelling unit shall exceed thirty percent of the heated habitable floor area of the principal dwelling unit exclusive of the proposed ADU. So we would take a look at the base house. So that's what we were talking about. Um. So that base house is gonna set the, the maximum. So as I, uh, was speaking with Commissioner Carrier, if there's a. Say a twenty-four hundred square foot home, uh, living area. Then the maximum dwelling unit is gonna be eight hundred and that would supersede then. So the seven, so right, eight hundred square feet. So if I was doing an accessory unit, I dropped down to accessory. Uh, one bedroom, up to seven hundred square feet. Okay, right? The seven hundred is less than the eight hundred. We're good. Two-bedroom, I could do a two-bedroom, but it's gonna be a maximum of eight hundred square feet. It is not gonna be. Up to a maximum of a thousand because it hit, it's exceeding that thirty percent benchmark. And then the same, and this is how it's written in the current regulation. Like it's actually. More challenging in the current regulation, the way it's writ, written. So that's, we broke it out differently here. Uh, conversely, right in our eighty zone, if there's a six thousand square foot home. And somebody wants to put in a, uh, a detached or, uh, it's even an attached. Two thousand, uh, two-bedroom unit, um, six thousand square foot home, the thirty percent would be. Two thousand, uh, square feet. On an attached unit, you're gonna have a maximum living area of a thousand. So it works both ways.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I don't mean to argue, but I mean, just the maximum could be, it could be a thousand and it could be twelve hundred. I mean, that's. You, you are limiting the ultimate size and that's good. But that, you know, you're right. You do look at the size of the dwelling unit, the primary dwelling unit. Um, but, but you can go that big into twelve hundred square foot. Uh, you know, you were using anecdotal. Someone's looking up at, I think it was Hunter's Ridge and I'll point out that, you know, my house. Here in the village is thirty-six hundred square feet. So I could build a twelve hundred square foot. ADU, uh, in, uh, behind my house. And, and again, I, I, I'm not necessarily saying I'm totally against that. It's just that, that, the first blush, that just seems really unfair. To all of my neighbors that have bought, assuming that, okay, sure, I know I can put an accessory building back there, but. You know, they're not gonna have, uh, people living there. They're not gonna have additional cars. They're not gonna have other things. So. I, I'll leave it at that. I don't, I don't mean to take up any more of your time. You guys have clearly thought about this a lot. I. I don't know how much the public has been involved. I, I have no doubt you all have been and I do appreciate. Uh, the efforts and I do appreciate Mr. Galvin's efforts as well. So, um, thank you for listening to me and giving me an opportunity to speak.
No, thank you.
Guys, hypothetical.
Go ahead.
If I own a thirty-six hundred square foot home, can I put a twelve hundred square foot barn in the back with no one living in it?
Uh, yes, you require, you need a special permit for an accessory dwelling unit greater than.
Someone could do that today with a special permit. What we're doing is you could do that today and someone, one. Someone could live in it essentially.
Cor- correct. It'd be habitable as opposed to, uh, just a garage. Yes.
So you can still put a structure in your backyard today with that size home, right? It just.
Yep. And you can do it by right. So for an, uh, R twelve to R eighty zone that, uh, a lot side of. Of at least ten thousand square feet.
Correct.
You can put a seven hundred square foot structure up by right. So when you're above seven hundred square feet.
Right. I was just trying to think like from a neighborhood aesthetics perspective, you can still put a, a structure there. It's just, can someone live in there or not? And today, no one can live in there. There'll still be electricity today, right? You can still have the lights, right? But. And there you go. I don't know if you got, again.
Some of them will run water.
Yeah, so. Just again, just to.
When we, when they start.
In a different way, right?
Yeah, I guess that would, I mean, see the biggest part that I'm worried about is the parking. So a big structure like that would probably relieve parking, whereas, you know, a structure that's for more people is, you know, goes the other way. Now, I'm not. Again, it's, what we're talking about is by special permit for that particular thing. So, um, again, I'm just for the record, I'm most just hung up on. The as of right and then how small the lot can be for that, right? And then like we keep saying, alls I hear over and over, it's not really gonna make an impact on affordable housing, but we're willing to take that chance, right? Where. It's like, well, if you, let's say you stop it somewhere, right? Like so instead of an, an R nine, it's an R thirty, right? That's still a huge difference. It's as of right. Um, so. Uh, and it's, you know, it gets rid of the family member aspect. So the, the only hang up for me is, is that. I mean, that's it. The rest of it, I'm, I'm on board with. I mean, I think it's again, a great regulation. I'm just nervous of that and maybe with time would. I could kind of just think and think more about it, you know, and, and I would feel more comfortable because you're right. Maybe no, nobody will do it, you know, who knows? Um, but anyways, I'd say I just look at these smaller neighborhoods and I'm, I just worry about that, even if it's two of them that. Become a disaster, uh, but anyway.
We're good. We had a really good discussion today, right? Like it was already stated, we've been working on it all summer and the fall communication has been sent out. This, uh, the latest regulation set online for about a month. Um. Whatever happens today, uh, it can be modified, right, Patrick?
What's that? Can be in the future.
Right.
Right.
Depending on what happens. I think it's a great step. I'm very proud of, uh, the work we have done with affordable housing. Alright, I feel like we're ready to close the meeting. Everybody agree?
Yes.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, everyone. Um, thank you at this point. Uh, we feel we have enough information and the public hearing on this item is closed. Are we ready to vote tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, so I need a motion and a second, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the application from Noreen Galvin for text amendment to the zoning regulations. Article four, section twenty-one, accessory apartments.
Go, uh, second?
Second.
Alright, we had lots of discussion, but. We're good. Everyone know, do we wanna, um, um, Shannon? Can you do a roll call?
Roll call?
Yeah, please. I think this one is important.
Uh, yes. And, and I've got the first six of you are up for voting. Okay.
Yep.
Uh, Patrick Carrier?
No.
Scott Halston?
Yes.
Liz Sanford?
Yes.
Matt Hupbogner?
Yes.
Matt Vandal?
Yes.
And Ena St. James?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Five to one.
Five to one.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, the next, uh, public hearing in front of us is an application from Michael Lavoy. It's for a special permit for home business to keep poultry and raise rabbits at twelfth Winthrop Drive, R nine zone. And who do we have?
Uh, I believe we have Mr. Lavoy.
Welcome, good evening.
Hi, thank you for having me. Um, so, um, the permit is to, uh, raise rabbits and, um. Have poultry. Um, it's really not, uh, uh, for a public or for a business permit. Um, because what we do really isn't a business. It's more of a hobby. Um, we raise them for show. Um, and we're raising them to, uh, boost the standards. Um, right now we have thirty breeding rabbits in, um, twenty-eight hutches. Um, and we have, um, twenty chickens and six ducks. I know that per the permit, we have to drop, uh, the number of poultry down. Um, so I am actually in contact with a couple of people to start that process now. Um. Um, when it comes to waste management, um, we do have a compost pile in the back and we offer the rabbit compost, um, to. Uh, members of the town and surrounding towns for gardens and, and, uh, things like that. So we offer it for free. Um, and, uh, we usually do that in the spring and, um, fall, um, and, um. It's really all I, I mean, is, is there any questions?
Do you have thirty rabbits?
Yep, thirty breeding rabbits.
Okay. And poultry?
Uh, twenty chickens and six ducks.
Okay. Okay. What? You're okay? Alright. Uh, are there like pictures of like how, like are these, um, animals like in cages now? Like what?
Yes, um, the rabbits are in, uh, hutches. So every, everyone is, uh, safe and then the chickens. Um, and ducks are in, um, a large coop that is separated, um, and, um. You know, they, they are, uh, all penned in. They're not free, they're not free range. Um, all of our animals are pretty quiet. Um, we do a lot of, uh, waste management things actually over the fall. I've been, uh, uh, working on, uh, replacing. Um, some of the dirt in both coops, um, as well as, um, covering them to help with a little bit of the rain. So they're. They're caged in on the top, um, but the rain does get in and cause, um, you know, some mudding issues and things like that. Um, you know, uh, these, the chickens have been there since two thousand and seventeen and we started, uh. With the rabbits in two thousand and nineteen. Um, so we actually picked up our first three, uh, the day of the pandemic. Um, and, uh, you know, the main goal was really to, uh, breed and show, uh, but they. You know, they're part of our, our family. So we do have thirty that are, are kids. We've got, um, three daughters. They go out and help. Um, we are out there every day making sure that they have food, water. We spot clean. Um, we clean their hutches, uh, twice a week. Um, and then, um, in the spring and summer, we power wash and, uh, all of that. Um, all of the food is in, uh, trash cans, um, to cut down on the possibility of, uh, vermin, um, and. I mean, I don't, there any other questions?
Hmm, okay. Um, I guess, uh, thank you. That's a start. Um, let's go through questions. Patrick?
Um, so what's drawn on the screen? That's where they are, right? Those are.
Yes, and I've been in contact with Garrett and I know that we may have to move the, um, the hutches. Away from that back property line.
And then what about the side one, this, the side yard? Is there something, so I was reading it, but I've already kind of forgotten what.
Uh, that's where the, the chicken and duck coop is.
Right, but the other one towards the residence, uh, so on the left? Well, yeah, if you're looking at the screen on the left, so the.
Yeah, that's the chicken and duck coop. And then the rabbits are down in the back. We use that area mostly because of the shade. Um, from the, from the taller trees back there, but we are, we, we can move those further off property if, if need be.
And have your neighbors complained at all or?
No, um, the only. No, um, the only complaints that we actually got were from people who are coming to purchase rabbits, I've never had any complaints from the neighbors. About the animals, um, we raise our rabbits a little differently, most rabbitries keep their rabbits in stackable cages. Um, in, which are small enclosures, all of our hutches are built for the size of the rabbit, so for instance, we raise. Um, French lobs there, which can be about twelve to fifteen pounds, and they have sixteen square feet of hutch. To be able to move around in, whereas in a regular rabbitry, they would probably get something like a thirty six by forty two inch cage. To live in for their lives, um, so we do, we ha- I feel like we've gone above and beyond to give. The rabbits what they need, um, the main complaints came from people who um, came to visit and felt that. Rabbit shouldn't live outside, um, in hutches, though our guys, um. Are, um, I feel like they're stronger stock, we've also vaccinated our rabbits against the RV. Um, the RHVD uh, virus that was, um. Something that uh, popped up in Hartford, so we actually called one of our uh, vet friends to come down, and all of our rabbits are also vaccinated against the RHVD. And when they're sick, um, we do bring them to the vet to have them seen, so, um, you know, it's not, it's, it's a different situation than. Uh, a lot of uh, possible rabbitries in the area.
So if, so the people complained that the cages are too small?
No, they complained because.
Outside.
That they were outside, yep.
And I'm assuming there's rules against that, right, like animal control?
Animal control has come to the house, and they've, uh, Brenda has um, cleared us for what we were doing, so. Um, because they have adequate food, water, and shelter, um.
I'm just asking, so I have no idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know, maybe they, they can live outside, right? I have no idea, it's more.
Yeah, they actually, they actually thrive out there better in the, in the winter than in the spring and summer anyway, which is why. We had put the hutches along that back fence, because there are very tall trees there that offer a lot of shade. And helps to keep them a little cooler in the summer, um, and it, and you know, in the spring too, we've had that heat wave in April that was like. It was like ninety degrees one day, so, you know, it's just one of those things that, that's where we thought best placement would be, but. If granted, um, this, we can, um, you know, make adjustments and changes as needed.
Thanks.
Okay, Scott?
So is the, the thirty rabbits, is that the max that you have any time, is that like a stable number, or?
That's our stable breeding number, um, throughout the year, usually in the spring, summer, and fall, we do breed. Um, so we can have um, upwards of. You know, depending on, depending on how, how many we breed, which we also limit as well, um, you know, we could have thirty six. Bunnies that, you know, are looking for homes, um, at a time, um, you know, but my, my wife. Uh, works really hard to help find homes for these, and we have people who have traveled long distances to get our rabbits. We had a cou- a French la- a couple come down from New York to pick up one of our French lobs, um. We've uh, we've used rabbit transport to send them, you know, to other places as well, so, um, you know, there's. And we don't breed a lot, because we know that, you know, the market is not that great, but again, it's more of a, it's more of a hobby than anything. Any of the money that we get goes back into feeding, uh, you know, doing improvements in, in the rabbitry on the cages, um. You know, we support local businesses by buying, uh, you know, straw in the winter from Jilly Beans and, and those types of uh, areas, so. Um, you know, most of anything that we get does go back to the rabbits, it's not anything that we, we end up keeping. In fact, I think we're more in the red than the black at any point, so.
So when you say thirty six, is that thirty six additional to the thirty?
Yes.
Okay.
But we keep them for eight weeks, and then we, um, you know, we usually have people that will, at, we, we post, we, we. Post them up for adoption at four weeks, and usually we can clear out about eighty percent of those by uh, the time the eight week mark rolls around, so.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, okay, I'm good for now.
All right, thank you, Liz?
Um, yeah, I, I, I had a rabbit when I was a kid, it lived, it, he lived just fine outside. In a hut, did you see that, did she heard it, Patrick?
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's the last thing I've really.
Two, and it lives in a, in a hut, but then it, it has the ability to go inside, but I'd never, no, I never, I don't know, I really don't, that's all I know of my.
See, that, that's about.
The ability to go inside.
I, I was probably seven when I had that rabbit.